Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council Meeting stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at goodyearaz.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order for December 16th, 2024. Everybody mark present. We're all here. If you would, please join Councilmember Stip in the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I offer this prayer of thanksgiving for the final council meeting of 2024 and for Sherri and I. Our prayer this day is that you would fill us with your faith and love so that we might love you with all of our heart, keeping us close to you. We pray that this time of year reminds us that grace and forgiveness should prevail as we feel your love this holiday season. Send your spirit to make us strong in faith and ready to serve you and your people as we do our work here in the city of Goodyear. I pray that we will make wise decisions in fulfillment of your will. We ask that you continue to watch over our state and city in this new year ahead. Please keep the men and women serving this nation, both here and abroad, in your protection. Be our strength and support amid the wearisome changes in this world and at life's end, grant us promised rest and the fulfillment of joys of your salvation. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Councilmember Loretano and Councilmember Stip for their years of service as council members of the city of Goodyear. I'm going to start with bringing Sherri, one of our longest-serving council members in Goodyear's history. Sherri, will you join me down in the well? Now, with a note as we go on down there, if anybody in the audience would like to speak, you'll have the opportunity to speak once we've finished the presentation. So if you have not done so, complete a card for the city clerk. So with that, let's go on down.
Thank you, Sherri Loretano, for your six years of service on AMLO's Board of Directors. Your commitment to water security and support of AMLO's mission has greatly benefited our organization. I have enjoyed the opportunity to work with you this year as you have served as Board President. Best of luck with your new adventures.
Councilmember Loretano, thank you so much for all of your years of dedication to the city of Goodyear and to the West Valley as a whole. Clearly, the impact that you have left on this region is going to be felt for many, many years. Just even sitting here in the new city hall at GSQ is just amazing and just part of your legacy in this region. Good luck. See you soon.
Thank you, Sherri, for all your years that you have given to the city of Goodyear. As we always say, it's been an honor to serve with you. And even though we had our young years living across the street from each other back when I was 10, who knew that we would serve together for so long in this great city? It is a great year in Goodyear, and you've truly been a part of it. Thank you.
Sherri, another one that's been really great here on the city council. We also go way, way back. Great team. Also, you bring a lot of discipline when you're asking the various things on the city council. You've been a great ambassador here for the city, and you're going to be sorely missed. Whatever you decide to do, I'm sure it's going to be fantastic. And good luck in the future, whatever it is. Take care.
Sherri, you have such a compelling story. You have raised your family in all this time that you've been serving the city of Goodyear, and you've really taken us to a whole new level. I'm so appreciative of everything that you've poured into the city. You are such a professional, and I'm so thankful that I've had my entire first term to work side by side with you. You've really been a model of diplomacy, decorum, and asking the tough questions. Thank you so much for your service to the city. We're going to miss you, but you've raised us up very well.
Sherri, I've known you a long time, even before I came on council, and I've had so much fun getting to know you and your family, and I've enjoyed serving with you. And I just wish you the very best in your life now. Just kind of enjoy life and be your own boss. So thanks for everything and just best wishes for a great future.
Hey, Sherri, we have a message for you.
Hey, Mom. We are so grateful for everything that you have done for this city. From every event to every city council meeting, we have been happy to be with you each step of the way. I'm excited to see where this next journey takes you in life, and I'm just excited that I get to call you Mom each and every day and that our city gets to call you a city council person. Thank you. I love you, Mom.
Hey, Mom. I think the one word I would use to describe you is passionate. I think passion is how you brought this city growth, how you made us, me and my brother, grow so well. You inspire everybody around you every single day, and it brings a light to my life to see people recognize you. People tell you how amazing you've done with this city. It makes me want to do amazing things, too. It pushes me through school. It pushes me through any activity I ever do. You are the biggest inspiration in my life, and I'm sure you're the biggest inspiration in a lot of people's lives. And you touched a lot of hearts with this position. And all 20 years I've known you, you've been amazing. Thank you, Mom. Love you.
Sherri, you served the city of Goodyear for almost two decades, and I would have to say that your service was a success. On a more personal note, I am so proud of you and all you have accomplished. We have an amazing family and an amazing life. We have two crazy dogs and a really ugly rubber chicken. We have each other, and now we have more time. You have a heart of gold, and we'll share it with that. I will end with, "I love you, we love you, and thank you."
We'll get some lights so I can read this here. But Sherri, I mean, we go way back. You know, you're going to be sorely, sorely missed. See if I can get through this. In recognition of your service to the community as a long-serving member, longest-serving member of the Goodyear City Council, 2010 to December 2024. That's how far back we go to that. So with that, I know you want to say a few words here. This is for you. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I've got my speeches there. I just got to grab my speech. This is the time for speech, right?
Yes, it's the time for your speech.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you. Thank you for everyone who came, and thank you. I want to take the time to thank... I had to write this down because otherwise I know I would miss somebody or something that's very important. I want to take the time to thank everyone in our community who has entrusted me to serve you over the past 14 years. I have been blessed to be able to serve the wonderful people of Goodyear and be part of this fabulous team. And it is a team. No one person does anything. We are so much more than just a government office. This is like the Goodyear family. I would like to take a moment to thank some people that have enabled me to serve for the past 14 years. First of all, to my husband, Steve, who's always been there for me and been supportive. Mondays often became airplane eat or pizza night when the kids were young because he took over all the duties then. I want to thank Christopher and Victoria, who are the best kids any mom could have. It was always great fun to bring them to city events growing up. Chris would help Steve and Ron Lord at the Sky Kids events, and Victoria grew up thinking... She was born on November 11th, Veterans Day, so she was kind of grew up thinking that there was always a parade on her birthday. So she's been our parade girl all those years. And I want to thank you, my dad and my mom, who's up in heaven now, who would watch the kids so we could go to some of these events because, as you can tell, my kids are in their twenties now, but they were really little when we started, so I couldn't really just leave them at home. So thank you, Dad, for all that. And then my mom and dad would go help gather signatures for my campaigns. And then thank you, Amy, to my best friend, my law partner and partner in crime over there, who's always been supportive. We have a law firm, and she was always willing to take more on so I could go serve and go do this. She'd be like, "Yeah, go do it. I got it. I got it covered. I got it covered." So thank you. I have also been blessed to serve the most awesome council and mayors. I was able to serve under two absolutely wonderful mayors. Shortly after I was appointed to council, the mayor at the time quit via email. I don't know if you've ever read that. He just mailed it in. And I was going, "Okay, what does that mean?" So Georgia at the time was vice mayor, but she wanted to run, so she had to resign. So we were really in flux. And we were very fortunate that we had Mayor Joe, Mayor Pizzillo, at version 1.0, to come in and steady the ship and did a fabulous job. Georgia was a remarkable woman. She was kind of like council mom. She'd let you know if you did something wrong. And I loved her dearly and her husband. But after her death, I was again blessed to have Mayor Pizzillo step up, and he again took the reins and has done an amazing job. Mayor Pizzillo, thank you so much for your leadership. Our rocky mayor, we are the only mayor who has walk-up music, so that is pretty cool. And just so you know, it's not... He looks innocent, but he's not. When I was vice mayor for a short period of time, we... And it was a "we" thing, not a "me" thing. We switched the city song when Georgia was out to a proclamation for an ACDC song. So Goodyear does have an official song. I don't think you've ever rescinded that, so... I want to thank Bill, who is terming out with me, and his wonderful family that is here as well. He will be missed greatly. After one budget discussion, I referred to him, and it was endearingly as our chief uncle. I called him that because if Bill really wanted to spend money on a project, you knew it had to be good because he would watch those pennies, and he was always looking out for the citizens of Goodyear. So we were very lucky to have him. I learned so much from him and the mayor about rate versus levy and which is more important. And at the National League of Cities, Lisa, his lovely wife, would also act as our council mom and make sure we were all scheduled to go where we needed to go. So thank you. And then there was one time where we were looking for a stoplight by the Star Point up at Estrella. I had come and said, "You know, there's a problem. There's been an accident. What can we do?" And we're going through CPI budgets, and the two of them found the money to get a stoplight up by the Star Point. They went through, like, "No, we need this. So okay, let's see what we can do." And I think that shows you how much a team we have always been here at Goodyear. I want to thank Wally, our little Energizer bunny. Wally is such a sweet lady. She's the person that she knows everybody. And after she talks to them for five minutes, she knows who was at their wedding and what they served. And you'd think that she was long-lost friends with them, and she's always been so sweet and kind. She was the first person that congratulated me when I was appointed and a class act all the way. And then she found out that her daughter was an Alpha Phi, and I was an Alpha Phi. Her daughter went to Gonzaga Law School. I went to Gonzaga Law School. So she's my Gonzaga buddy, so I will miss you, Wally, a lot. I want to thank Laura. Laura is such a kind soul and a wonderful presence to have at the city. I actually knew Laura when she was our Personnel Officer at the City of Phoenix Law Department. Luckily, I never had to go see her in that capacity. So that's a good thing, but she is... I've seen her grow, and she was doing just such wonderful work for being on the Water Commission, to the Arts and Culture. So thank you, Laura, for everything that you do for the city. And I want to thank Brandon, one of our other council members. I'm thanking everybody because, guys, this is such a team, and I think it's important that the whole... We are a team. Like, no one person does this. There's no one person that does this. Brandon, your love of your family and your faith is so important, and I admire that so much. It's such an inspiration. And I know how hard he juggles a business, kids. I've been there. I know that. It's so hard. And you do such a great job with your family. Just keep remembering, keep a little time for you, too. Such a nice man. And Vicky, she's our newest council member for just a little bit longer than... She doesn't get that title anymore, sweetheart, so... This is the last time you can say you're the newest because you are no longer the newest. She's so passionate about everything, and she just sparkles. So I want you to remember that that's what makes you special. Just keep your passion, keep your sparkle, and just you keep going, girl. And then Joanne, who was on the thing, the video, she served with us for years. Such a sweetheart, and she actually lived across the street from us growing up. I was a little kid that used to tag along with Joanne and my sister and play Kick the Can up in Moon Valley. And then Trey and Benito, who were here, they will be a wonderful addition, and Goodyear is so lucky to have them. I want to thank Winette. Thank you so much, and your entire team, Justin Keeney, and everybody else. I have seen you blossom, and I'm so proud of how you are running our city. You do an amazing job. And I want to thank everybody that serves this city every day, from every position because you can't do it without all that moving parts. When it might be the glue that holds it together, but there's a lot of moving parts. Some of you have been here since I've started on planning and zoning, like Katie. I was on planning and zoning for several years, and she would present. And I want to thank the men and women of the police and fire who protect us every day. You know, without them, our city isn't safe. So thank you, Chief, and I'm just sorry that I didn't get the chance to serve with you longer. You're doing amazing stuff, and I do appreciate that. And I thank all the men and women that serve for you. I also want to thank Fire because they've been especially helpful, and Paul knows this is coming. From the time... And we've had to deal with the fire department from the time we took our son. Christopher was two. He was a scorpion in his shoe, so we rushed him over to the Estrella. I wasn't even on council then. We rushed him over to the Estrella Fire Station so they could see what was going on because he got stung when we put his shoe on at two years old. So lesson learned there. To all the great work that they've done to help us with our family and... My dad, when he's been needed the ambulance service. I think his only comment was, "It was a little bumpy, so if we could work on that." I made the mistake of one time saying, "Because I really love the parties and everything that Parks does, and Nathan and Guileen and everything," and I made a comment that, "Oh, you guys are my favorites because you do parties." And I had never heard the end of that. So I have something for Paul. So one thing that my law partner and I have been doing to kind of put a positive light on things, we do criminal defense, is to write children's books. So I'm giving you my first two copies of Flicker the Fire Dog and Flicker the Fire Dog Goes to New York. He's a Goodyear fire dog. Yeah, because when I walked out, Paul's like, "Okay, you're going to say something." So I've just got a few more things. I moved to Goodyear in 1994, and I've seen a lot of changes. I've seen a lot that has come and a lot how we've grown. When I came from law school, I hired as a prosecutor in Phoenix for $33,000 a year. That's not a lot of money. It was back then in '94. And found a house here for like $84,000. So that was my first house. And then my husband, I met him through my law partner, and he lived in Gilbert. And he would fly over to the airport, which is why I love the airport. He would fly over to bring me a grape. He would walk from the airport to where my house was in Estrella Vista, and he would bring me a grape. People made fun of me because I lived so far away at the time, and there weren't any stoplights. There were no lights on Estrella at all. I'm sure Bill would be happy with that. And it was... And I used to have like welcome-to-California parties because when people would come from the East Valley, they'd be like, "Oh, we're driving all the way to California." So I think that was so great. And my first... I started getting involved. The first thing I got involved was the Super Fun site, and my husband would call it the plume of doom. So we lived with the Super Fun. So I would come home, "How's your meeting? Did planning and zoning?" And then I got a call when there was an opening from Georgia. "Why don't you apply?" And I did. And I saw what a great team and how wonderful everybody was. Nathan, Guileen, everybody that's here. And I know I'm missing people, so everybody and Christian with your chicken, thank you for that. So I want to thank everybody. I am so proud of all the accomplishments. This building we're standing on is one of our major accomplishments. I was on the City Center Committee, and I used to tease Mayor Lord. I said, "Are we going to get it done?" Because I was pregnant with Victoria when I was on that committee. We got this built before she graduated high school. So that was a big accomplishment. So sometimes it takes a long time to get things done, but we get them done. I am so excited that we have such a safe city, a new downtown, that we're growing. And to have been a part of the team that built this, to building parks and libraries, ambulances, police officers, everything we knew, water security, everything we knew. So Goodyear really is a place to live, work, and play. And I think we're really working that vision, and I appreciate everybody. I cannot wait to see what the next chapter begins for Goodyear. It's such a great city, and I'm so proud to have been a small part of that. So again, thank each and every one of you. And thank my family so much. I appreciate all you've done. And thank you, Mayor. I will not go far. Thank you.
Come on down, Bill. Let's be starting the video.
Hi, Bill. It's Clay Goodman, Vice Mayor of the City of Buckeye. Just want to congratulate you on an incredible career in public service. You made the transition to become an elected official and just made incredible contributions to the city of Goodyear. And thank you for all your hard work and your friendship. Look forward to your great retirement.
Congratulations, Councilmember Bill Stip, on a life of service. We really appreciate all that you have done representing the city of Goodyear on Valley Metro Joint Boards. I personally have to thank you because you've been my mentor in this process. So I wanted to thank you, your family. I share my love with Lisa and Aaron, thanking you for all the service that you've given, not only to the city of Goodyear, but also to transit here in the Valley and Valley Metro. Thanks for being my mentor, and congratulations on a public service term well-served.
Councilmember Stip, thank you so much for your dedication to my city, the city of Goodyear, and the West Valley community. You have made such an incredible impact on everything that you've done over your years of service to this region. I know that what you do in the future is still going to impact this community. So good luck, and I know we'll be seeing each other soon. Take care.
Hello, Bill. It's kind of with mixed emotions to be saying bye to you. You know, we go way, way back when we were both on as employees here at the city of Goodyear. And you've been an excellent asset all the way through. Appreciate you on the council because you're already adding good discussions in there. Sometimes you get so passionate, I always think to myself, "He seems to care about what? I have no idea." So I figure, you know, you know where I'm coming from on that. But again, I hope, wish you well in all seriousness. I wish you well whatever you decide to do, and God bless.
Well, Bill, it's really fitting to be right here in front of City Hall. You've had such an impact on us to raise us up from a suburban town to a city that is really a powerhouse in the West Valley. So I want to thank you for everything that you've done in terms of really keeping us on track. You've really been a budget hawk. You've kept us very accountable on projects and things that we've done. I've learned so much from you and how to ask the tough questions. And yet, you've been so compassionate towards residents and caring for employees. So thank you for everything. You've really made a difference.
Bill, I've enjoyed serving with you, and I haven't always agreed with you on some of the budget issues, but we've had a great time being council members together. I've loved meeting your family, and they're just awesome. And I want to wish you the very best in whatever endeavor you take on. And I'm sure you're not going to be home watching TV. When you finish council, you'll be out solving some other city's problems. But thanks for everything, Bill, and best wishes for a great future.
Hi, Dad. Congratulations on an amazing career in public service. As I was thinking about this video, I couldn't help but reflect not only on your career on council, but your career in public service my entire life. Whether that's falling asleep on your lap in the fire station, to reading to kids in my kindergarten class, to having the discussion in high school about you running for city council. And here we are 13 years later, and your career is coming to an end on city council. But I'm so grateful for the example that you've set my entire life on what it means to serve others, to work hard, and to lead with logic and intelligence and just humor along the way. I'm very excited to see what happens next, and thank you for everything.
Well, dear, I am so proud of you. It's been a journey. We've been together 40 years, and every one of those years, I've been by your side. And from the beginning, I knew I wanted to support you in whatever you did. And I'm so proud of the dedication. And I'm so proud of the dedicated life that you've had, serving both on the fire departments that you were on and now here for the last 13 years in the city of Goodyear as a council member. And there are so many things that you can be proud of. Your fingerprints are behind the scenes and helping the city grow. It will be great to see you home on Monday nights, but I'm looking forward to spending time with you and whatever the future holds and whatever God puts in our life next, I'll be right there by your side. I'm so proud of you and all you've done. Congratulations.
Bill, and it's been a long ride for us. We've known each other when we were actually employees of the city and you're certainly going to be missed, even though, you know, sometimes we worry about it.
Maybe not.
But you're gonna be missed. And recognition of your service to the community as a member of the city, Goodyear City Council, from June 2011 to December 2024. I mean, it's been awesome and again, it's great with the team, as Sheri had mentioned. It's been a grim team effort. We look around when we first got on board of this and we look at the city today and what it's become. I'm so proud of what we've done together, you as a member, as a member of this team here as well. So with that, let's see if you can get through your speech, okay?
Thank you.
I'll sit this up here for you, okay?
Thanks. You know, I was talking to some folks outside and this is the second time I've done this. And the first time that I did it, I forgot to mention my wife and thanking her. So I have written out, that was with note cards, I've written this whole thing out, so I apologize for reading that through. I also figured out that if you can leave out your wife, you can leave out just about anybody else. So I kind of made it a point to make sure that I'm not calling out people by individual names, just so I don't, so I don't repeat the same mistake. I had a mentor in my life that challenged the dichotomy of success and significance by asking which is better for one's life. Albert Einstein once said, try not to become a person of success, but rather try to become a person of value. And that is the origin of the story behind the dash. If you read or know about the dash, you were born in one year, you pass in another and there's a dash in between. I will have been a city council member from June 2011 to, or should I say dash, December 31st of 2024, is what I did during my dash of value. Sheri and I both have been able to write about the things that we've accomplished and the growth of the city. And that's thanks to all of the councils, not only this group, but the various versions of this group. We've been very benef, had a great benefit of having versions of this. But it's thanks to these councils for making their fiscal conservatism, or as my dad used to say, making sure that our eyes were as big as our stomachs when it came to spending tax dollars. I leave office in two weeks knowing that the city is actually in better shape than when we started. I was reminded by Nathan earlier that we are doing much more with parks and recreation because of the changes and the things that we've done. But more importantly, I learned to seek perspective about things that I didn't know or I didn't understand. Public art, the value of parks. Also, a little bit about race relations, socioeconomic challenges, the free market, and public transit, to name a few. Until we understand the issues from all of the sides, we never truly comprehend the challenges that are before us. Since 2009, I have been working with the Department of Defense as a subject matter expert in chemical, biological, radiological, and nuclear homeland response, where we have the creed, which is make no assumptions. And I believe the same motto applies to public policy. I'm a big believer in Dr. Demming's Plan Do Check Act, and I drove that very hard at every meeting, almost to a fault. I carried that with me to the dais only because I care deeply about the city, as I know everyone on our staff does as well. I need to repeat my comments about the employees of this city. We would not be enjoying the success that we have if it were not for their dedication and their professionalism. Our group of directors, their staff, and certainly not to forget our city manager, Winnett Reed, and her executive team. I know they will continue to do great things for all of us as residents because they are focused on the right things to do for us as we go forward. I knew when I ran for office that being a council member was going to be a great challenge and quite honestly, it didn't disappoint. I also knew that I would be meeting some amazing people along the way. My peers here tonight and those that have previously served are all on the very top of that list. I have special memories and emotions for each of you that I will absolutely cherish. I will miss all of you very, very much. The push and pull that we've endured during our meetings to find the best solutions for residents were never pleasant, but at least they were productive. The Goodyear City Council has rarely ever functioned based on people's individual desires or ambitions because we all, but we always united to do what we thought was in the best interest of everyone. When I first decided to run for office, Georgia Lord was giving me advice about running a campaign. And she kept telling me, well, have your people do this, have your people do that. And I had to tell her one night, look, I am my people. It's just me and my family, that's it. I'm very thankful for that, that today I have people that I know I can count on. I'm grateful for the friends that I didn't know were even possible. A few of them are unfortunately no longer with us. Walt Steiner was a great community member and a fellow Chicago Bear fan. We enjoyed great coffee conversations, he and the mayor and I. Georgia Lord was very special to many of us and I think she tried the hardest to save me from myself. Didn't ever work. Gary Gelsner served this city in a number of different ways, planning commission and on city council. I told Gary the night that he referred to late water bill payers as deadbeats, that I would never have to worry about what I said on the dais, that he had set the bar pretty low, but then a few weeks later lowered it again by referring to the employees as worker bees. And former Mayor Bill Arnold was always there encouraging me with great encouragement and sound wisdom. Along this journey, I've met mentors, confidants, encouragers, educators, and honestly, some great human beings. We all lost one of those great people a number of years ago in Wayne Howard. He was a real mentor to me and he taught me more about people, property development, and business than I ever learned in my MPA program, my public administration program. I've also met people along the way who never hesitated to call me to try to find solutions to their problems or to seek my advice. My contact list is much longer, but it is filled with many new friends. I look forward to continuing these relationships, not because we have to, but because we want to. Steve Jobs famously said, life hits you in the head with a brick, don't lose faith. I'm convinced that the only thing that keeps me going was that I loved what I did. Your work is going to fill a large part of your life. The only way to truly be satisfied is to do what you believe is great work. I always believed and I still do in the power of local government and its importance to its residents. So whether I was serving on the Board of AMO, Board of Directors for AMO, the Chair of Valley Metro, or MAGS Transportation Policy Committee, I believe the work was important and vital to our city. I'm thankful for that opportunity to be able to live my passion. And to my siblings, I thank you, you've had to endure so much over the years. The effects of online commenters, the questions from your friends and neighbors, and even the additional scrutiny of having our family name in the public realm was never easy. All I can offer is a simple thank you for something that I can never, is all that I can offer of my gratitude. Quite honestly, it's never been easy being related to me and this just proves it. To my kids, Erin and Greg, you've played roles in my elections. In addition to rearranging vacations because we had meetings on Monday nights, your lives were disrupted, you suffered, especially early in this journey, but I know that you learned to do good anyway. I'm so proud of both of you. And here comes, to my wife, Lisa. Who now honestly has to figure out what to do with me every night of the week. She has probably suffered the most or benefited from me not being home, not really sure which is better. But she is a rock and she always has been and I am forever grateful. And finally, I asked the Goodyear residents to step into the future, that was my campaign slogan, in every campaign, and I hope that you agree that what I did, that I did what I said I would do. I'm filled with great pride and sorrow as I wrap up my time as a Goodyear City Council member and this concludes 42 years of public service. It has been a great honor and privilege to serve this wonderful city. I've worked for Goodyear in some capacity since 2001 and as I've written before in numerous publications these last couple of months, this has been the capstone to my over 40-year career in local government and I will certainly miss it dearly. Thank you to the residents for trusting in me to guide our city forward. My prayer for the next city council is that you provide the same or more value to the city than I feel I did. There's an old expression, the juice is definitely worth the squeeze. So thank you.
So you did a good job getting through both the stuff. I'm pretty sure that was gonna happen because everybody goes way back. But with that, does anybody want to speak at this time? You have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Oh. I guess you guys said it all out there then, that's fantastic. Let's see what I got here. Now, citizens who would like to speak on the address, so that's no, right?
We have one speaker.
One speaker?
Yes, Jason Martinez.
Hello, Jason. The council will listen to comments, take any of the following, respond to criticism, request the staff investigate the report matter, request the matter be scheduled on future agenda, limited to three minutes, the red light will show you when the 20 seconds is up. You don't have to give the address, just that you're a resident and your name, that's it.
Thank you very much. My name's Jason Martinez. I've been living in Goodyear since 2016. I appreciate the parks. The Goodyear Rec Center is a gem, thank you very much. It needs a skate park attached to it, just for future use. Really quick, my concern is about, so with the growth in Goodyear, I've been here for almost going on eight years now. I moved from Avondale, I've been working at Estrella Community College for 20 years. I'm a counseling psych over there. And within the last year, I've noticed a ton of what is happening in terms of red light running. So the other day, I was driving home from work and I live by the ballpark, by Goodyear Ballpark. So as I'm driving home, I watched an elderly man run a red light at Thomas and Litchfield, I watched a young woman run the red light, this is all in the same trip, McDowell and Bullard, I watched another individual run the red light in front of me at Roosevelt in Estrella, and then close to the high school at Yuma in Estrella, and then Yuma and Goodyear Boulevard. This is all in one trip. You might think this is a crazy day, this is every day in Goodyear. It's becoming more prevalent. I love our police force. They are small but mighty and they cannot be everywhere all the time. The city of Tempe just approved 14 red light cameras and they will be implementing those soon. I know that's an unpopular opinion. However, I'm, as a counseling psych, I know that changing behavior is like squeezing water out of a rock. And so one of the most effective ways to change behavior and enforce the law is technology. And so I am asking the city council to consider red light cameras for future to assist with the massive influx of people and growth on our streets and add some safety factors. The other thing is the intersection at Yuma and Goodyear Boulevard is very dangerous. Recently, there were left turn arrows added for east and west travel. There is no foot traffic from the high school that goes east and west. All the foot traffic from the school goes north and south. There are hundreds of kids that cross that intersection every day with no light for them specifically. And if you're approaching the intersection from north or south, the center of the intersection is elevated about eight feet, so you cannot see oncoming traffic as you approach it. I have seen people turn left and almost hit kids in the crosswalk. I've seen people almost hit each other head-on because they're making lefts and are speeding and cannot see each other as they approach. So in order to improve that intersection, I believe a permanent light post needs to be put in with left arrows for the north-south traffic or a walk-only situation for the students from Desert Edge High School. Additionally, people blow through that school zone all day long on Yuma Road because the school sign itself is old technology and the street is really wide. And so that sign does not catch your attention like the new school zone signs that you've put on Lower Buckeye, which are really nice. Thank you for your time.
City manager, can somebody talk to him? How do you want to do that?
Yes, we have his contact information. I'll have the chief, Chief Isit, reach out to you tomorrow.
And how about for traffic?
And we'll follow up with the engineering director.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have one more speaker.
One more? Go ahead, come on up.
Solomon Jadidi.
Again, the same as before, just your name, three minutes, you'll see the timer up there and whether you're a Goodyear resident or not.
Okay. Good evening and my name is Solomon Jadidi. I'm a resident of Goodyear. I'd like to thank you guys for your service. I appreciate what you guys do. I'm here tonight to bring to your attention some things that I've noticed that kind of piggybacks off of the previous citizen brought up. Personally, I don't recommend traffic lights. You're gonna have a bunch of issues with them not taking the right picture at the right time. It's gonna cost a lot of money to put them up. I recommend that instead of putting up technology, you add that manpower to the Goodyear police or the local enforcement. Goodyear's footprint is about 191 square miles, has a population from the census.gov website of 111,805 people. Approximately 8,000 of those are veterans, I'm one of them, and has about 165 sworn officers and 68 non-sworn officers. So that's a ratio of approximately one officer to 678 people. That means that, you know, I checked the Goodyear Police website, they have about 10 squads that are staggered patrol through the city. Assuming that, this is not how it works, I'm pretty sure, but if you had max manpower, 10 squads patrolling the city at one time, the most that each squad can cover is 19 square miles. In a mass casualty event or a mass accident, that's not enough. And to go off ratios, code enforcement, I talked with Supervisor Lupe, there was approximately two of them and she said they're hiring two more, so there's four. Four people for 112,000 doesn't cut it. I'm not even gonna tell you what that ratio is. The operating budget for the Goodyear Police fraud I found was 58.9 million. So we gotta do something about that. I just don't recommend the traffic lights, maybe put in some roundabouts because people are blowing through stop signs. I can't even go home or go to the grocery store or go to work or school or anything without having people blow through, stop sign almost hit me, like a dash cam is mandatory at this point. Insurance is through the roof, no one can afford it, we're having a bunch of uninsured drivers on the road. This is deteriorating the quality of life in Goodyear. Another complaint I have is that the city of Goodyear doesn't have animal control. We have to piggyback off local, you know, cities around us and other municipalities and that's not fair to them, it's not fair to us. I think it's great that you guys want to be fiscally conscious and frugal with the budget and we have a surplus and everything, that's fantastic, but it flies in the face of actually knowing what that means when you're depriving its citizens of necessary services. I'm tired of seeing dead dogs when I go to the grocery store. As an Afghanistan vet, every time I see a dead dog on the side road, I can't help but think about IEDs. It's just seared into my brain. So, you know, I'm not saying that's happening here. So, you know, I'm not saying that's happening here, but you gotta be conscious of the 8,000 vets that live here and what we've been through. And not having animal control is not doing them any kind of service. Also have noise complaints. For code enforcement officers, they can't handle it. They're not trained, they don't have the auditory equipment, or the analyzing technology to make a good report, to push it through, and relying on the EPA isn't enough, because they're bouncing that responsibility back to the city. So, I recommend that you guys take what I'm saying seriously. And going forward, I want to support you guys in every way possible. I want to support the local police, I want to support the fire department, all the services. We gotta do something about this. And again, I believe manpower trumps technology every time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we'll have.
City manager, I can tell you, it is a priority of ours as far as the traffic. It was, if I'm correct, Chief, I remember the last staff, there was like 1,400 last year criminal speeding tickets issued. So, we know it's an issue, and we want to focus on that. So, I appreciate the feedback that you're giving us here, thank you. And, City Manager, you got it?
We'll start with Chief Isid as a follow-up and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. City Clerk, please read the Consentage Item, Items 1, 2, 4 by title only.
Item 1, Approval of Minutes. Item 2, Approval of New Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for High Tide. Item 3, Authorize the Expenditure of Funds Within the Self-Inured Healthcare Trust Up to 1.2 Million For The Purposes Of Operating The Goodyear Wellness Center. Item 4, Adopt Resolution Number 2024-2439 Approving The Property Acquisition Of Lot 8A Of Goodyear Civic Square, Authorizing The City Manager To Execute The Purchase Agreement, The Development Agreement, The Sixth Amendment To The Development Agreement, And Other Such Documents Necessary To Effectuate The Purchase Of The Parcel And Authorizing The Expenditure Of Funds And All Associated Budget Transfers Necessary For The Acquisition.
Thank you. Does anybody on the council wish to remove an item? Seeing none, can I get, let's see, get a motion in a second? I do have that up on the board. Open up for a vote? Passes 7-0, thank you. We have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing item is to consider a major plan general amendment for I-10 Citrus Gateway. Gonna hold ahead and open up the public hearing. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Guadalupe Ortiz-Cortez, Principal Planner. Before you this evening, we have a major general plan amendment request for I-10 Citrus Gateway. The subject property is approximately 267 acres. The property is located west of North Citrus Road, south of West Roosevelt Street, east of North Perryville Road, and a row of homes located within unincorporated Maricopa County. The property is also located north of West Bamburin Street and the Destiny RV Resort. The applicant is proposing to change the land use designation of the approximately 267 acres from neighborhoods to business and commerce land use. The existing neighborhood's land use designation permits various zoning, including single-family, multifamily residential under 18 units per acre, and commercial zonings. The property is currently zoned planned area development with the Las Palmas PAD. The PAD has an underlying residential zoning, with the southwest corner having an underlying commercial zoning. The property is limited in the number of residential units it can build due to the property's location within the Luke Air Force Base graduated density contours. The proposed business and commerce land use designation permits various zonings, included higher-density multifamily, commercial, business park, and light industrial. Commercial zoning allows for uses such as automobile repair shops, banks, retail, restaurants, bus terminals, daycares, art studios, and funeral homes, among other uses. Business park zoning allows uses such as professional offices, data centers, indoor entertainment, manufacturing, retail, restaurants, and warehouses. Light industrial zoning allows uses such as manufacturing, offices, parking lots, research facilities, and warehouses. The applicant has submitted a rezon application for the property. The applicant is proposing to rezon the property from the Las Palmas PAD to Business Park District with a PAD overlay to allow flex general commercial and light industrial zoning in parts of the property. Staff will present to the city council the rezon application at a later date if the proposed major general plan amendment is approved. Staff believes that the proposed major general plan amendment is in conformance with the general plan and the evaluation criteria provided in the general plan and detailed in the staff report. The proposal to amend the land use designation for the approximate 267 acres from neighborhoods to business and commerce supports the prosperous and innovative fundamental strategy of the general plan by diversifying the economy and responding to market shifts. The proposal also supports the livable and connected fundamental strategy by ensuring the city has a mix of land uses and a varied employment base. The developer is required to construct half-street improvements for Citrus Road and Bamburin Street in conformance with city standards. And the developer is also required to provide the appropriate improvements for Roosevelt Street in accordance with Maricopa County standards. The applicant is also creating plans for a frontage road along Roosevelt Street to separate the traffic between the potential developments in the property and the local traffic for the residents north of Roosevelt Street. The traffic generated from the proposed land use change would be mitigated with the street improvements mentioned and would continue to be evaluated with the rezon application in any subsequent site plan applications as well. The change in land use would not significantly alter the character of the area in a negative way. The property is in proximity to business and commerce land use to the east at the Innovation Center. The Innovation Center is zoned PAD for a mix of uses, including light industrial, commercial, and office. And the Innovation Center has also approved plans for industrial, specifically warehouses on the eastern part of the site. To the west, in the city of Buckeye, there are also approved plans for industrial uses such as warehouses. Staff follows state statute requirements to notice and provide appropriate state and county agencies 60 days to review the proposed amendment. Notices were also sent to notify property owners within the vicinity of a neighborhood meeting and public hearings. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting in November. It was attended by approximately 11 nearby residents. The residents that attended the meeting expressed concerns with increased traffic, blocked views, landscaping, and size of buildings. A resident requested that the Citrus Road and Roosevelt Street corner is softened. Residents north of the property expressed concerns with their access into and out of their properties, with sightlighting trespassing into their properties. Residents also expressed discontent with services in the area and asked if anything could be done to improve internet and television services in the area. Residents north of the property and Roosevelt Street also expressed concerns with drainage in the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission held the first public hearing for the item on December 4th. At the hearing, three speakers spoke in opposition due to concerns with traffic, building height, noise, safe crossings for children going to school, and expressed desire for restaurants and commercial in the area. The four speakers spoke in favor of the project, stating that the project is ripe for industrial development and that there are areas in the city with multifamily development near industrial projects. As required by state law, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a second public hearing on December 10th. At this meeting, one person spoke in opposition of the project. Another person submitted a speaker card in favor of the project. And a third person stated that they are not opposed to the project, but would like the developer to continue to work with the residents to address their concerns. Concerns that the speakers at this meeting mentioned include noise, truck traffic, left turns going eastbound, furniture design in the distance to the property fences on Roosevelt Street, light intrusion, crossings for children going to school, and internet service. Staff also received six emails from four nearby residents. The residents expressed concerns with loss of safety, privacy, quality of life, increase in commercial and truck traffic, noise, and crime, decrease in property values. The residents also expressed concerns with wildlife impact, drainage issues in the area, speed limits on Roosevelt Street and the frontage road, concerns with timing and safe exits out of their properties going eastbound, safe crossings for children, as mentioned previously, blockage of cellular signal by the sizes of the buildings, trails on the property, and water usage as well. Two residents requested limiting semi-truck access to Citrus Road and Bamburin Street, and avoiding truck access on Roosevelt Street in front of residential properties. The concerns expressed by nearby residents may not be able to be addressed within the parameters of the general plan amendment application, but staff will continue to work with the applicant on the rezoning application. Additionally, the applicant is required to do a separate neighborhood meeting regarding the rezon application, where solutions to these problems can continue to be explored. At the conclusion of the second Planning and Zoning Commission hearing on December 10th, the commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommends approval of the major general plan amendment for I-10 Citrus Gateway. Mayor, council members, this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is in attendance today and has a presentation available. We are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor. Alma Olivares.
Well, just, hold on one second there. Do we need something from, that's a good point. Wendy, is there anything you want to add, or you want to wait till after these comments?
Mr. Mayor, at your pleasure, I'm happy to do either one.
I'll tell you what, so you can react to them. Why don't you wait till what they have to say, and then you can, I think it'll make more sense you come in afterwards.
Sounds great.
Okay? Go ahead, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alma Olivares, I am a Goodyear resident. I sent an email and I came in person, just in case you were not able to read it. I'm really concerned about the lack of safety, privacy, and quality of life my family and neighbors will experience with this project. Neighbors on Roosevelt Street and Perryville Road. We have very little information, as the rezoning application is not available for us. But, what we have, our main concern, is Roosevelt Street being used for semis entering and exiting the proposed facilities. Most of the residents in the area enjoy being outdoor at our homes. Our children and grandchildren play outside. We have gatherings with family, friends, and church fellows in our front and backyards. We have animals, horses, chickens, and plants to take care. We do gardening stuff to grow fruit and vegetables. There are neighbors walking early morning and in the afternoon with children in pets, as well as neighbors riding their horses. When we bought our properties, we knew we would have the noise coming from the freeway, but we were not expecting having semis driving so close to our homes, as the empty property was for neighborhood use. In my opinion, a frontage road is not enough protection for our families. If in and out access for semis exist, they will be used. 27 feet distance, including a median, won't avoid the noise and risk the semis will bring. I had a meeting with neighbors that for some reason were not informed by mail of this project. I couldn't reach two more, I only could reach a few. And their main concern is their children who ride school buses walking so close to a road used by semis, and the school buses itself sharing the road with them every day. I think, as parents, trying to protect our children is our priority. With that said, I believe that not having access for semis on Roosevelt Street is the best for the safety of all. The developer will also have Citrus and Bamburin available for that. I had another list of concerns that I expressed on emails and in person at other meetings, for example, light intrusion, wifi cellular signal blockage, not having adequate access from frontage roads to our properties, etc. City council members, our safety and quality of life is in your hands. Please, make a wise, kind, and responsible decision. Before I finish, I don't know if I'm allowed, I would like to ask those who feel concerned about their safety and their family's safety, I don't know if they can stand that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. None in cards?
Myra Martinez. And Mayor Myra will have a translator with her.
Okay.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Can you get a little closer to?
Buenas tardes.
Well, and you too, since you're gonna be, yeah, there you go.
Yes.
All right.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Me llamo Myra Martinez.
My name is Myra Martinez.
Vengo hoy a expresar mi preocupación.
I come today to express my concerns.
Por el proyecto I-10 Gateway.
For the I-10 Gateway project.
No me molesta que hagan bodegas.
It does not bother me that you will build warehouses.
Lo que me preocupa es que hagan entradas y salidas por la Roosevelt.
What worries me is for you to make entrances and exits on Roosevelt.
Puesto que ahí es la parada del bus de mis hijos.
Because there is my kids' school bus stops.
Y me preocupa su seguridad.
And their safety concerns me.
Tienen otras opciones de entrada?
You have other options for entrances.
Por Citrus y Bamburin.
By Citrus and Bamburin.
En ese lugar paran tres bases de escuela.
In that place, three school buses stop there for school.
Más aparte nuestras familias se sienten inseguras.
Plus, our families feel unsafe.
Por ese motivo me moví de Phoenix a Goodyear.
And that's why I was motivated to move from Phoenix to Goodyear.
Por la seguridad de mi familia.
For the safety of my family.
Si soluciones no se pueden encontrar.
If solution cannot be found.
Para este proyecto.
For this project.
Prefiero que se mantenga como zona residencial.
I prefer that it remains as a residential area.
Ya que siempre ha sido el plan.
As that has always been the plan.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other cards?
We had three residents who submitted speaker cards but do not wish to speak, one in support and two in opposition.
Two in opposition.
And that's it.
All right, with that, Wendy, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm hopeful staff can help me pull up my presentation.
You've heard some of the traffic concerns, right?
I have, and I'm gonna jump right to the point, don't worry.
Okay.
So, Mayor, actually, if you could jump back to that one, that would allow me to skip, if we could do the index, whoever's magically driving the bus. There we go, thank you so much. Wendy Riddell with the Law Firm, Barry Riddell, 6750. My pleasure to be here, particularly on your last night. Here this evening on behalf of Kurnet Rankin, we are, of course, tonight just talking about the general plan amendment. I want to share this graphic. So, this graphic, you can see where our site is located, but you can also see all the other projects that we are showing there are approved projects. They are approved site plans. Obviously, we, Perryville butts right up to Buckeye. That is a large employment area for Buckeye. Some of these projects are already built, some are in the process of being built. Obviously, as you move your way east, you know that we've already pulled permits on the innovation now called 10 Goodyear. That site is underway. My point in telling you that is, there is already semi-traffic on Roosevelt. And as we bring our zoning case forward, we think we've got a very good solution. we think we've got a very good solution that helps mitigate that concerns for the neighborhood. The challenge I have here tonight is I'm not in a position to demonstrate that as thoroughly as I would like to. I do want to share a couple of quick points. We have, and I... Not to the roadway issue specifically, but I do want to let you know we have made sure that we come in and incorporate the business park district along the edges. Anything more industrial is pushed further back. But what I also want to let you know is ultimately the plan here along Roosevelt Road... Actually, I go back here. Is to create a frontage road for the neighborhood to the north, for the Maricopa County residents that are there to the north, create a landscaped island with some access points, and then fully construct Roosevelt Road. So we understand the concern about semi-trucks. We're sympathetic to it. It is a problem that exists today. And I think as we bring the zoning case forward, we'll be in a position to provide very meaningful solutions. Mr. Mayor, council, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. I'm going ahead and close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read the resolution number 2024-2438 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 2024-2438, approving a major amendment to the Goodyear 2035 general plan to amend the land use designation of approximately 267 acres located at the southwest corner of North Citrus Road and West Roosevelt Street from neighborhoods to business and commerce, requiring amendment to exhibit 3.3 Land Use Plan and Transportation Plan of the Goodyear 2035 general plan, providing direction and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Other council, please enter a motion in a second to adopt resolution 2024-2438. See, I see a motion and a second. Let's open it to speak. Let's see, who's first one up is Councilmember Stip.
Thank you, Mayor. Guadalupe, it's... I'm sorry, there you are. It's my understanding that the action tonight is to simply move the general, the major general plan amendment forward. We are not here to talk about zoning. We are not here to talk about roadways. We are not here to talk about any of that. Is that correct?
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Stip, council, that is correct. We are discussing... Or the item before you is the general plan amendment. The rezon application is in review with staff at the moment and will be presented to the city council at a later date.
So to Ms. Riddell's point, any discussion about roadways, light intrusion, et cetera, that doesn't even apply here, correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Stip. The applicant is required to hold a neighborhood meeting for the rezoning application where the light intrusion, traffic can continue to be... Those issues can continue to be addressed.
Right, but that's not tonight?
That is correct.
Okay, and I think that part is the... That's the important part for us to remember that we are only talking about is the major general plan amendment a yes or a no? And then the rest of the details, we need to work out at another meeting and at another time after the applicant has continued to work with the neighborhood. Is that a good summary?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so my... Then my major question about this general plan amendment tonight is, why are we... Why? Why are we talking about a change from neighborhoods to commercial?
Thank you, Councilmembers Stip, Mayor, council members. The general plan does require a public hearing process for land use changes for properties of size greater than, I believe it's 200 acres. And this is... This request to amend the general plan land use from neighborhoods to business and commerce is due to the fact that the recent application that is in review with the city includes zonings that are not included or permitted within the current neighborhood's land use designation.
I think this may be a question better for the applicant. Just kind of not procedurally why, but marketplace why.
Thank you.
Sorry, I probably should have started with that, and I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Stip. So procedurally, rise, we're here because we're required to do it in the same calendar year, and we're sneaking it in under the wire. Marketplace-wise, I would tell you there's two primary reasons. The first would be the Luke overflight here. Really restricts the amount of residential that could ever be developed and frankly makes it effectively undevelopable. The second is the governor's change in water policy. We are not within Goodyear's water service area here. I do not have the ability to subdivide this land. So it is impossible to do a residential subdivision under those conditions.
I don't think we should lose sight of either one of those facts when we talk about this particular property. When we originally zoned that two years ago for residential development, the governor had not issued the moratorium on building, nor had we... Nor did we have a viable builder, I think, at the time. If memory serves me correctly, we had a couple of major home builders that might have been interested in that but have looked at that property and deemed it, quote unquote, "undevelopable" from a residential perspective. Is that correct? Okay, so now we say what's left. And I think that for the council tonight, we have to ask ourselves that question. If we can't build residential there, we don't have the water and we don't have... We're limited in the number of homes in that area. We all know that that area lacks infrastructure, so density of homes is going to be critical to allow that property to be developed. Then we have to ask the question, what's left? And I think we all know that what's left is what is being proposed. Appreciative of the fact that we are looking at the new commercial business district, even though it looks warehousey. It doesn't necessarily mean that it will. And then that is for the... I'm going to say for Sherri and I, that's for the next council to work on. But as far as this is concerned tonight, I'm in favor of this moving forward. And I think that graphic that you showed about what is being developed right around it, particularly in Buckeye, both to the west and then what we're doing to the east, kind of cements that for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you, Guadalupe. Can you come up to the mic, please? And will you go to slide number six?
Yes.
I just am trying to get a reference. You don't identify any of the roads on this... On this slide to me. Or if you do, the print's so little I can't see it. But it doesn't say Citrus on it. So you... And I drove it, but I wasn't sure I was even at the right place. So... So Citrus is to the right, next to the Innovation Center?
Councilmember Campbell, that is correct. I have pulled up another slide that calls out the streets.
What's the bottom one?
That would be West Van Buren Street.
West Van Buren? Okay, I'd appreciate it if you're going to bring these forward, if you could identify the streets for us. It just helps us. We don't... I mean, we know what you're talking about, but we don't really know visually. We need to know exactly where they are. I'm assuming the land to the left. This is Perryville?
That is correct.
It's... Buckeye has already approved it for industrial uses, so the odds of them putting in a warehouse or distribution center is very probable. And I'm assuming that the area where our folks are living now, it is a county island that possibly is not affected by the Luke overflow that perhaps this area was built before the map was done for Luke. So they have entirely different rules for where they live than what we have. And we have to abide by what is governed for the city of Goodyear. And also, I wanted to know, they said that the kids are bused to school. And... Yeah, the kids are bused to school. And so I'm not familiar with, number one, where the school is, which I'll find out for the next hearing where the school is. I'll find out how many buses come and where they're picked up because I don't understand that part.
Thank you for the feedback, Councilmember Campbell.
Yeah, and that's all my questions. I just would like to have more reference on your map so that I can get a better visual, so that when I'm driving it, I know I'm at the right place.
I will work on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Stip answered a few of the questions around the process, but we're actually voting on today, clarifying that as well. So the site plans is going to include... And the rezoning is going to include the next steps, lighting, traffic flows, the cutouts, access points, things like that. Right now, we're saying we can do these particular uses, which is a commercial, light industrial, not full industrial. And we have a general idea of what we're looking at, the developers looking at for the future here. So yeah, so this is a business park use could be there. It could be a lot of things. It could be gymnastics. It could be dog grooming. It could be a lot of uses. Could fit those type of criteria. I'm kind of comparing it to off of Bullard and some of the uses that are south of the freeway there, that plaza for the commercial, small businesses that can go there. So it could be utilized for kid services, some restaurants, things like that as well. So... And then, does this... This isn't lined out yet, like the buffer between there and the residence? Is it 300-foot buffer or is that in the applicant's application? Or is it a... What that looks like?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hampton. So ultimately, it's the 300 feet I was referencing is the distance that we are ensuring that it will be that business park district and then creates a flex zone. But I think when we did the math, it is a hun... Katie may have to help me. A hundred and eighty feet that is a setback buffer where you are adjacent to residential. So there is a significant setback. Again, all details that will come with the zoning case. But we will continue to do the outreach and have good answers when we come back to you.
All right, and then I assume this might be for Guadalupe, but the height difference between the two, what we're doing now versus what it is currently?
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton. Mayor, council members, the general commercial and business park have a high limitation of 56 feet. The light industrial have a high limitation of 50 feet. In the PAD overlay, the applicant is able to request a height increase, and the applicant can speak on that.
Okay, I was just curious. And what's it currently? What's the height?
Fifty-six feet for business park.
Okay. Okay. Right now, for the residential, for what it is currently, general plan set at?
It is thirty... For two-story homes, yes. That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm supportive of this change, especially in light of what can and can't be built there. And I really appreciate the applicant working with the residents, with their concerns with Wi-Fi and traffic and things like that. Looks like they're doing a lot of accommodations to help the residents with this area here. So I appreciate that as well. Yeah, and I think this is a good need for the city, especially for the small businesses that don't have a place to go right now. So yeah, I appreciate this, so I think I'll be a yes foot on it. So thank you.
Let's see. Councilmember Gillis?
Can I talk to the applicant, please? I think that's who I need to talk to. Wendy, I think Wally asked this question, if I'm correct in this. This is not... These residents that are here tonight asking about this, this is not within the city of Goodyear. It is part of the county?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Gillis, that's correct. The residents are a part of that north, that county island immediately to our north.
Then we really have no say over that.
That's...
Okay.
I'm never going to tell you you have no say, Councilmember.
No, but that tells me we have no say.
Yes.
And so that's the county's issue, plus the flight path with Luke. So there's nothing that we can really do about that. So that's what I wanted to be clear on. That's what I thought you said. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor, Kano?
I know we got some emails today, and then we had a speaker talk about why not the residential. That's what's been zoned. And I appreciate you answering that, Wendy. The issue with water, obviously, and the Luke overflight. So we have a very substantial parcel of land. And then the graphic that you had put up was seeing what Buckeye's doing and then certainly what is happening at the formerly the Innovation Center. So this is sandwiched in between. I think what sets us apart, perhaps, maybe from Buckeye is that if you look at the northwest corner of Perryville and I-10, there is development where they have a cross dock, and you can see the dock, and there's no screening. I think Goodyear always wants to put a better emphasis on appearance and screening and mitigation. So I think you're getting... You're hearing a lot from the residents and you're also hearing from council about things that will come up in the zoning. But just to telegraph ahead, some of the things that we are thinking about is certainly the appearance of the building, the buffers, the light mitigation. I like the consideration of amenities you might be able to offer the neighbors, such as the internet service or walking trails or whatever you are able to do. So I think you're going to have some good discussions. And then when you come back later on to talk about the specifics, then certainly we'll probably jump in the weeds on those. But at least you have a good idea of what the residents are concerned about and then what you're hearing from us. So thank you.
Councilmember Lortano?
So thank you very much for bringing this, and I want to thank the residents for coming and telling us your concerns. As Councilmember Stip mentioned, this isn't the time to go through all those fine details, but the applicant has heard, the council has heard, and I think those will get worked out. When you see projects go up in Goodyear like this, especially with the business park that is going to ring it, you're going to see it's going to be like almost a campus-like environment going around. It's not going to be what you may be seeing in another city, perhaps. You're going to see buffers, 180 feet. So you're going to see that distance. And those type of businesses that are going to go in there are going to be something that families can use. I think Councilmember Hampton explained gymnastics, gyms. We've had sandwich shops in there. There's been music lessons. I mean, so it's all sorts of things that maybe a small business owner has that is going to be around the end, and they might have inventory, like a flooring store that you could... That, you know, for people, not for just businesses, but for houses and people to get those... Where they have their inventory in the back. So I think the business park development is great. I think it's important to note what Councilmember Stip mentioned, that we're just here to see if this is basically a good type of property for this place. And as the applicant mentioned, this can't be residential now. It just can't be there. The water's not there. They can't subdivide it. It can't be residential. You take the water issue in Luke. It just can't be. I think this is a very good project. It'll actually enhance the neighborhood because there will be services as this goes forward that you're going to see that can be built here that community members can take advantage of. So I appreciate it. And those conversations about some of your concerns, they've been heard and the applicant has kind of given you a preview as this goes forward, that they'll have more meetings with the community to talk about that. So I do appreciate you reaching out to the community and the community input, so stay involved. So I will be supporting this.
You know, being the last one up, it's always tough. There's a good discussion here, but what I'm hoping, when the applicant brings it back, you know, Wendy, you can try to find us some small business startups in there, in the business park. That's one thing that we seem to be lacking to help get them started. So and I'm sure we'll be discussing that when you bring this thing back there. So with that, can we go ahead and open up for the vote? Pass 7-0. Looking forward to when you bring it back, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Last public hearing is item considering amendment to zoning ordinance regulations related to access dwelling units. Open for public hearing.
You can now give a few minutes for anybody that wants to head out.
Got tiny houses here.
Yes, I have a visual aid. It's not chickens to throw at y'all, but it's a little visual aid to kind of illustrate the point, so some Monopoly houses.
Hopefully you didn't destroy a Monopoly set to get these things, though.
I have four Monopoly sets, and I did not destroy when I bought new pieces. So I love Monopoly. All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Christian Williams. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christian Williams, Planning Manager here. And today we will be hearing a zoning ordinance text amendment that is city-driven but state-required in regards to accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, as we will call them for short. So why are we here? The purpose of this amendment is to bring us into conformance with the passage of House Bill 2720 during the 2024 legislative session that amended Title IX, which is applicable to cities and towns, Chapter Four, Article Six, again of Arizona revised statute, by adding a new Section 9-461.18. And again, that is talking about ADUs or accessory dwelling units. So again, state-driven requirement. So what is an ADU? An ADU is another single, it's another dwelling unit that is associated with a primary, single-family residential unit. So if there's a residential unit on a lot, it's accessory to that. It can be attached to the residential, primary residential structure, or it can be detached from the primary residential structure. It is a self-contained structure and can include a bedroom, a bathroom, and may include kitchen or cooking facilities. Again, may include kitchen or cooking facilities, but does have a bedroom and a bathroom, so it's a living corridor. So this Goodyear ordinance or zoning ordinance text amendment, and I'll go into the rules on this upcoming slide. It will apply to all single-family lots. So if you're using your monopoly, this is your primary house on your lot. This bill would allow for one attached ADU, allow for one detached ADU. And if your lot is over one acre in size, it would allow an additional ADU that is detached, so long as it is restricted affordable. So that's a requirement to have that third one on an acre or greater lot. Setbacks for ADUs are five feet, and the ADU must be located on the side or rear of a single-family property. The maximum height of the ADU is 30 feet. And I would say that it's typically 30 feet, because most of our residential districts in the city are 30 feet. So the height of the ADU is the maximum height of the district, not of the primary residence. And one last distinguishing factor is that while ADUs have to meet design guidelines, they are not required to match the design guideline or design of the primary structure. According to state law, that is what it says we have to do. So I'll not, I won't go into this table very much, but I just wanted to give you a flavor of what the difference is between a casita, a guest house, and an ADU. They all have some similarities, but some differences. So an ADU may have a kitchen, while the others do not necessarily have kitchens. For garages, an ADU is not required to provide any additional parking. In the case of a guest house, they are not allowed to have separate parking from a primary house, and a casita may have different parking. If you look at setbacks, ADUs and guest houses both share that there are five-foot setback on the rear and side, whereas a casita must follow the main building footprint of the house. And if you look at height, ADUs can go up to 30 feet in height, whereas guest houses cannot exceed 20, and casitas must follow the main height of the main house, or shorter than that, if that makes sense. There is an exception to this rule, though, and some of you will see this on your monopoly card, and that is the vicinity box. So the vicinity box is effectively the Luke Air Force Base area of influence within the city. ADUs may not be permitted within the vicinity box of Luke, and that is a state statute box, and that is how our ordinance is also written. So how does that impact Goodyear? So no ADUs in the box, what does that mean? It means that half of Palm Valley Phase One is within the vicinity box. So this ADU, the ADU rules I just spoke about, do not apply to that area. In addition, North subdivisions is just outside of the box. Historic Goodyear is outside of the box. Centerra is half in the box and half not in the box. Estrella Vista and Glenmont States are half in and half out of the box. Cereval Village is half in the box. All of Ballpark Village is outside of the box. And Estrella, King Ranch are all outside of the box. What that also means is that Pebble Creek, Palm Valley Phase Five, Palm Valley Phase Two and Three, Able Ranch, those are all in the box. Wildflower Ranch, all of West Goodyear, those are all in the box. So the ADU rule, ADU rules I just described are not applicable to those neighborhoods. It is those neighborhoods that are half on this screen here, and anything south of the Hila River, like Estrella, King Ranch, and so forth. There's one exception, though, and that's HOAs. Title IX does not impact HOAs. So if you're, if you are outside of the box, for example, Estrella, and your HOA says, we don't permit ADUs, then the city can say yes all day long, but the HOA trumps the city, because this is a bill that says cities allow them, does not say HOAs allow them. So if you're considering an ADU, the first step would be to check with your HOA if you're outside the box. Again, Historic Goodyear and North subdivisions don't have an HOA. I'll bring that up. So again, cities are required to allow ADUs outside of the vicinity box. HOAs may restrict them. With that overview, the Planning and Zoning did hear this case, and they've recommended to approve, recommended a forwarding of approval of this amendment, and staff recommends you approve this amendment as well. If we do not approve this amendment that the state has put into state law, on January 1st, ADUs will be allowed across the city with no restrictions. So staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that you approve the zoning ordinance text amendment. Happy to answer any questions you have, and hopefully your monopoly gave you what you wanted.
Before I go to Councilmember Hampton, HOAs a lot of times require cars be parked in driveways, whatever. So if you have additional ADUs, where are they supposed to put their cars?
The state law says that cities cannot require additional parking, and I would say that you should definitely reach out to your HOA. If your HOA has a rule-
But if the HOA requires it, then you're kind of in no man's land, right?
Then you may need to build the parking that your HOA has a condition of you building that ADU with.
That's what I kind of thought. All right. Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, Mayor, can we close the hearing?
Excuse me. Close the hearing. Any, oh, let me get this. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 2024-1616?
Adopt ordinance number 2024-1616, amending Goodyear zoning ordinance, Article 2-2, definitions, amending Section 8-2, detached accessory buildings, guest houses, ventilation courts, and portable storage containers to include provisions for accessory dwelling units and restricted affordable dwelling units in minor scrivener's error, providing for correction, severability, and an effective date, and directing the city clerk to report a copy of this ordinance.
Ms., does anybody on the ordinance want to talk on this particular issue? We're good? Okay. City Council, please enter a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2024-1616. See a motion and a second? All right, now, Councilmember Hampton, you're up.
Right. No, thank you. So I mean, I appreciate you bringing up that this is a start of state law, and that we need to pass something, so we have something on our books as well. It's very similar to the chicken ordinance, it feels like. So HOAs can still trump that as well. So I appreciate it. I had a question on what, what, so if I'm in Estrella Vista and I don't have an HOA, can I build a shed and call it an ADU? A large shed? If you, great question. So a shed would be an accessory building, an ADU would be an ADU. So if you were going to build something and you wanted to occupy it with bedrooms, bathrooms, and things of that nature, we would review it from a life safety perspective and up to building code standards that are not, you know, that are for occupiable building. Occupiable? Yeah. Okay, I'm just kind of, I'm just curious what it would look like, that's all. So, has to be certain standards, you said, on look, but it can't be, inside can be unfinished, has to be a finished, because you said it's something, you don't even need a bathroom, you don't need to have a kitchen necessarily. So it could be just a open box, right? If you were going to occupy that structure, you would need a building permit for sure, and we would inspect that for life and safety and make sure that it's up to standards where somebody could live in it. So my other piece of advice would be, residents shouldn't be going out there and just converting their sheds without building permits. Having a little shed for your rake and your power tools is very different than having Mema live in a, in a shed, so. Okay, and what was the criteria? You might have it in notes here. You said the third dwelling had to be affordable? Yes. What's the criteria for? Great question. So it would need to either be deed restricted or development agreement restricted with the municipality, so Goodyear. And it could only be rented to households earning up to 80% of the area median income. That is the definition of restricted affordable. And that would only be permitted on lots an acre or greater as their third ADU. Yeah, there's only like two neighborhoods that even meet that in Goodyear right now. Basically. So, so Mema has to be, meet that criteria? Mema, if you want the third, you might want to move Mema into ADU one or two, because ADU three- If she's making too much money, she couldn't go in there. Okay. Okay, I'm just, just curious how this might play out, so, okay. Great question. And, okay, I understand the reasoning why the state's doing this, but I don't know if they're going to get the intended result of what they're trying to, trying to get here. But, okay, yep, I will definitely be voting yes for this, but thank you for the clarification and the, and the aids, visual aids here, too. Very welcome.
Thank you. Go ahead and open up the vote. Passes seven zero. Thank you, Christian. What do we got here? Does the council have any comments, commendations, or reports on current events? See? Yes, anybody? You got something? Turn your.
First of all, I want to say that we did shop with a cop this last weekend, and that, that was fabulous. Thank you, Chief Esit. It was absolutely fabulous. Thank you, Wally, for everything from, that Pebble Creek does to help us with that. It was a huge success. Some of us, some of us went straight from there to the Litchfield Parade, which was also a success. It's the first time I've done it, so it was, it was really great, and I thank them for inviting me. It was really fun. And the kids, the turnout was huge, so that was great. And then I also want to say, Solomon, I want to thank you for your service. You've been here several times, and I have forgotten to thank you for your service, so thank you for that. And also, we hear you. We do hear you, believe it or not. And we're working on that. So I just want you to know that, okay? And also, I want to say that my heart and my prayers go out to the school shooting in Madison, Wisconsin today that we heard about. There's three dead, and there's several in the hospital. And I always look at there, for the grace of God go I, and I'm thanking God that we don't have that in our city right now, but we've got to remember that that could happen at any time. I was talking to someone this last weekend about school shootings and how thankful we were, we hadn't had one like that. And then I turned on the TV this morning and I saw what was happening in Wisconsin. So I think we all should be, especially this time of year, very thankful for what we don't have happening here. That's it.
Thank you. No? You guys good? Over here, Hampton?
We might already talked about it, but I appreciate the tree lighting ceremony. That was a big success, I feel like, too. I missed the doodling piano thing this last Friday night, but I feel like every weekend, the square is busy, hopping, people are getting pictures next to the tree. I think the, the fake ice skating is popular. I'd love to get real ice skating there in the future.
We're working on it.
You're not the only one.
You're not the only one.
Yeah, I might need a charge, but I really appreciate ice skating. And then, also, yeah, it's bittersweet. I'm going to miss Bill Stip, and also Sheri Lortano. I appreciate their service. So thank you so much for everything you've done for the citizens of Goodyear over the last 12-plus years. So thank you very much for that. And I think that's all I have. So thank you very much.
Wally?
I just wanted to report that today Luke Air Force Base came to my home and picked up 1,500 dozen cookies that will be distributed to all the airmen in the dorms, and this is my 12th year heading this cookie collection house. I'm known as a cookie lady. And I would also like to say that I wanted to thank the Pebble Creek Pickleball Club for their very generous donation of toys. We pick them up, and they're being used, and today our city employees were out shopping for all of the families for our fill-in needs, so we're going to be at the ballpark at 7:00 on Saturday morning to make several homes and families very happy with Santa's packages. So that's it.
Save any cookies for us, Wally?
No. I probably should have, but I did take, I don't know, maybe four, six, eight dozen to the office, and they're up in the staff room for the staff.
Oh, there you go.
I did that.
City manager, have any?
Yes, I do. The second week of holidays on the square was held Friday, December 13th. It attracted approximately 3,000 attendees. And over the weekend, the rink attracted nearly 1,000 skaters. We have one more holiday on the square this Friday, December 20th, featuring a live theater performance of Elf the Musical by the talented cast of the Creative Arts and Production Academy. And then, as Councilwoman Gillis mentioned, Shop with a Cop was held on Saturday, December 14th. We had 12 children in attendance. Unfortunately, eight of them had to cancel due to illness. But they each received $250 gift cards to Walmart, thanks to the Pebble Creek Home Tour. And in addition, any child that did not have a jacket had one purchase for them in addition to their gifts.
That's nice.
And one child text his mom while he was there and says, Mom, this is the best day ever. It makes planning the whole event worth it. So thank you.
Yeah, that's nice.
Well, with that, next meeting for the council induction on January 6th. Wish, you know, Sheri and Bill well. They're certainly going to be missed. You know, like I say, even the care department. I knew I was going to work that in for you, Bill. I know, I know. But with that, hopefully everybody has a safe and happy holiday. No further business. This meeting's over.